I will go ahead and welcome everyone to our first meeting of 2022. And officially bring this meeting to order. For the record, I will call the names of the counselors. Please unmute and respond that you are present. Counselor Iverson.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor Deckard.
Here.
Counselor McKim.
Here.
Counselor Crossley.
Here.
And Counselor Hawk. It's not up here too. She she just got in there. Counselor Hawk, are you able to unmute?
Oh, I tried it.
There you go.
Okay, the video was not on.
The video is not on, but Counselor Hawk is here for the record. All right, our next, there we go. Great, welcome. So our next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God in visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We now have time for public comment for items not on the agenda tonight. We have a time limit of three minutes per speaker and it looks as though we do have a hand raised. Ah, it's Jim Shelton. Could he be allowed to speak, please? Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Happy New Year. Jim Shelton, representing the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, is speaking right now on Behat, a court-appointed special advocate for CASAs. CASAs are volunteers who work with children who are in the court system because their parents have abused or neglected them. The children will have been removed from the parents because the court has determined it's not safe for the children. And CASAs help these children and the court to know what's going on. We're going to have our winter training session starting in just a few weeks. It'll be February 2nd through the 28th. A CASA doesn't have to have any special skills, objectivity, tenacity, and good communication skills are some of the important factors that would help a person be a good CASA. The training will teach you everything else you need to know. It'll cover the roles and responsibilities of a CASA, the pattern and family dynamics of abuse and neglect, Indiana's child protection law, and then you give you tips on interacting with the children and the families and the DCS case managers, and the many other professionals that'll probably be involved in the case. And then tips on report writings, because a CASA's main job is to help the court know what is going on in the case. They will meet with the child monthly. They'll meet with the, wherever the placement is, be it with relatives or in foster care. They'll meet, of course, with the parents and monitor parents are doing and complying with the disposition directions from the court that they have to fulfill in order to be reunited with their children. So it's a very wonderful opportunity to help the community. You get to work with kids, which is just really wonderful. And hopefully you will be successful in helping the children get into a safe, permanent situation. Ideally, the parents will have straightened themselves out and will have been reunited with their children. I just had a case saw complete a couple of weeks ago. Well, it's now been over a month. Where that is exactly what had happened. The parents overcame their drug addiction and served their debts to society if they had them. And one of them did and have gotten jobs and have been reunited with their little four-year-old boy. It was very satisfying. I got some neat pictures from them seeing Santa Claus, et cetera. So it can be very fulfilling. It very much helps our community. So please think about that opportunity. The training will be Monday, Monday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 5:30 to 8:30. It'll be determined whether to be hybrid face-to-face or Zoom as we get closer. And I appreciate this opportunity to spread the word. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Appreciate you being here. Are there any other members of the public wanting to make a comment for items not on the agenda this evening? No hands raised. So let us move to the adoption of our agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's agenda? Great, okay. So no changes there. We will consider that accepted and move to department updates. There's not anything formally listed here on the agenda under department updates, but do we have any departments that would like to do so? Great. Michelle.
Good evening, Council. I'm just bringing an item back to your attention from the Sheriff's Department. It's regarding the Captain of Operations and the salary concern that he brought forth on December the 21st work session. I did send you an email just a little bit ago because I've been trying to catch up on, catch up on my emails because, you know, I have been out sick. So I have just to give you some background, again, the Captain of Operations is being being filled by a different person. And when they were looking at the salaries and everything, they found that the current salary for that position is lower than the highest paid lieutenant that they have on file, and they are asking for that to be reviewed. And so I spoke with Margie about that. And, oh, excuse me. And she met with Counselor Deckard as well as the Sheriff's Chief Deputy Russell Brummett regarding that discrepancy, and she also met with WIS regarding that. And so they just pointed us back to that there is a salary range that they offered. And so I do believe that I have a proposal that I would like for the council to consider moving forward that I believe would help eliminate any confusion moving forward. And that was just as a, and like I said, this is just a my, my idea of moving, moving forward that whatever the hourly rate of that lieutenant, of the 25-year lieutenant is to add $2 to that hourly rate. This will always ensure that the Captain of Operations will be making more in the salary compensation hierarchy. And it will give us a good formula moving forward instead of trying to, you know, double-check everything. It's, it's just a better basis, I believe, moving forward. This concept will also can be applied to the community corrections as well. That's something we might need to consider later, but not at this point in time. So that's just, you can review the email. Let me know if you have any pros or cons about it. And then what I'm thinking is we can bring this back to the council at the work session for more discussion and consideration. And if Margie has anything she wants to add with regards to the meetings that she had with Counselor Deckard and Chief Deputy Brummett, as well as WIS, I, I ask her to just chime in.
No, I think Kim's summary is great. Just keep in mind that Kim's summary does keep you within the range that WIS recommended for this position. So we had set it at a certain level during budget inadvertently. And we didn't realize that that would place the Captain of Operations at a lower salary than those he was supervising. So this change would keep it within the range that was recommended, but make it higher than, than the highest paid person he's supervising. So I think it'll work. And, you know, one of the things we ought to probably put on the department heads as we're doing budgets each year is to ask them to sort of check that internal pay equity. And, and make sure that if there's anything wonky that they think is weird, that they bring it to our attention before budgets. But I think that's, but I would recommend that any questions you guys have, you ask us. We can track down those numbers and make sure that you have it so that you feel like you're able to vote on this in the end of the month. There is somebody that was, what was hired internally and promoted internally. If this pay change is made, you may want to make it retroactive to his hire date, but that's something we can talk about at the work session.
Thank you. We will go ahead and make sure that gets on the work session. No, no questions about that, then, I guess. Let's move on. And then I see Penny Cottle is here from our health department. So let's hear from Penny.
Good evening. Thank you. I won't take much of your time for updates, but with the rising cases, I just wanted to mention that this evening. Our cases per 100,000, our positivity rate is the highest it has been in this entire pandemic. And that is something that we are seeing across the state and quite frankly, across the nation. So we are working very hard on that to continue to get people vaccinated. We know that that is our, our best way out of this. But I also wanted to address testing with the enormous amount of people right now who are needing testing. You can imagine that testing sites are overwhelmed. So it is difficult. It's difficult to find home tests. I think people know that. It can be difficult to find an appointment for testing, but it is still true that some counties, some testing sites still have more availability than others. So using the state map is still your best place to start. But I'll give you one example, the Gravity Site over on Curry Pike, they did, I, last week or so, put up some new signs. They use, they're now using a new QR code system for registering to, to move the process along faster. And we've had some good feedback from people saying that it really shortened their time in line greatly, but they had to close the line today at two because they had over 50 people in line at 2:00. So in order to get them through by the time they were due to close, they needed to shut the line down. So you know, they didn't technically close early, but that line was closed. And that happens a lot with walk-in clinics. There's a point where you have to say we're, we're done for the day. We will be continuing to ask for mobile clinics to come to our county. The state is adding some additional mobile clinics, and I think that they will take us up on that. But they are, are looking to serve across the, the state. So I don't have the date for the next one. But we will announce that as soon as we have a mobile clinic coming. So wanted to tell people, please be patient. If you cannot get a test and you are symptomatic, please stay home, isolate, and act as though you are positive so that you reduce the risk to others. Again, schools are overwhelmed, hospitals are overwhelmed, parents, teachers, health departments. Everybody is overwhelmed by this right now. So patience and kindness remains a very welcome virtue for all of us to remember. And, you know, we will get through this. Hopefully, you know, we are seeing that Omicron does tend to have less severe disease, but today the health department, the state health department was saying that it is about three times more contagious or easily transmitted than Delta. And we know that that was even easier to transmit than those earlier lineages. So it is very easy to transmit. In Indiana, about one in four people are testing positive right now of the people who test. So we have an extremely high positivity rate. But we will get through it if we remember to maintain those prevention strategies we've used. It may not prevent all infections, but it certainly can reduce severe infections, hospitalizations, and deaths. That's it.
Thank you, Penny. That's sobering. But appreciate the update. It looks like Counselor McKim has a question.
It's more of a comment. And thank you very much for the update, Penny. You know, I hate to say this, but it seems like, you know, due to supply and demand issues, if you want a, either a test or a vaccine and haven't planned well in advance, going out of county, going to one of our neighboring counties is probably the easiest strategy. I mean, I went to, you know, I, my, my daughter just had her vaccine the other day in Brown County, her booster the other day. My, my son in Morgan County and testing in any of the surrounding counties, just, it just seems like they're not doing as much testing. They're not doing as much vaccination. And so there's a lot more supply relative to demand. So that's, that's always an option for folks around here who have the means to, to drive to a neighboring county.
It is in, in this, Indiana Department of Health did extend their time at Indianapolis Motor Speedway, and they have added some walk-in times as well as appointment times. But you're right. And then the concern is those individuals without the resources to go out of town.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes, I just wanted to remind folks at home. Do not wait until you think you're on a deadline to, to go to try to get this test. My daughter and I went to be tested, but we both sort of had cold, whatever, while she was home for the holidays. And there was a line, not terrible, but it took a long time to get the answer back. A couple of days longer than what they had said. She went ahead and got on the plane and went home. What was she going to do? As it turned out, we were both clear, but you know, just allow for extra time for the answers. They're very backed up. And it doesn't hurt one bit, by the way. It doesn't hurt at all.
Yeah. And thank you for that, because that, that is an excellent point I should have mentioned. With the overwhelming number of people getting testing, that means labs are working 24/7. So if it used to take 24 hours, it's probably going to take 48, maybe 72, and in some cases, longer.
Counselor Crossley.
Yeah, so I had a quick question because I know the QR codes for the Gravity Site, like QR codes are the way to go in terms of making things work expeditiously. My question is, in order to help further that process, in order for that to become a little bit more faster while you're sitting in the line, because my family and I, we were in the line at the folklore testing site last week, and it was about an hour and a half to two-hour wait. So, and of course, that's, you know, the nature of everything, but in order to try to help those at the Gravity Site or site at Curry, is there a way that folks would be able to access the QR code even before they get there to, like, help with the process a little bit more further?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and I can ask. They don't take appointments there. So it isn't about scheduling an appointment, so I'm not sure if it will. But that is something I can certainly ask in our communications with them and see if that's something, we're happy to share that if it will make things easier.
Okay, yeah, because I definitely would love to be able to push that information out and try to help out as much as we can to help do this a lot faster. So thank you so much for that information.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Are there any other department updates? Okay, let's see what we have next here. Oh, we have council liaison updates. Are there any council liaison updates, counselors? Nobody has an update for us today. Okay. That is absolutely fine. We have the next item on our agenda is the number seven American Rescue Plan Act requests. And moving forward, council would like to have a standing item on the agenda to discuss and review these ARPA requests submitted by the commissioners. There is not a request currently on our agenda for consideration, therefore we'll, we will just go ahead and move on to our next item of business. And that is number eight, county council organization. State statute requires us to have an organizational meeting at the very first meeting of the year, and we have two elected positions to fill, the president and the president pro tempore. I will now open the floor for nominations for the president or pro tempore. Counselor McKim.
Yes, Council, I nominate Kate Wilts for president and Trent Deckard for president pro tempore.
And Counselor Munson.
I second those two nominations.
Okay, um, thank you. I accept the nomination. And I hope I can fulfill everyone's expectations should I be elected. Counselor Deckard?
I also accept the nomination, and I'll work hard to keep up with President Wilts and the other counselors have elected.
Are there any council comments on the nominations? Yes, Counselor Hawk?
Yes, I certainly wish both of you the very best, and if you succeed, that means the entire council will succeed. And so I'm happy to work well with whoever the majority puts forward as, as I have done in the past. I will pass on this because I believe it is up to the majority caucus to decide what's going to happen here, and I wish you well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing then, may we have a roll call vote on the president and president pro tempore?
Laura Iverson?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wilts?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Pass.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed majority, six to zero to one.
Thank you. And thank you for your support. Your confidence. Oh, boy. Um, now we move on to another important piece of business that we have to take care of each year. And that is the appointment of council members as department liaisons and representatives to various boards and committees. Counselor Deckard?
Council, I move approval of the following appointments of council members as department liaisons and committees. Assessor, Hawk. Auditor, Deckard. Auditor, Wilts. Aviation, Hawk. Building, McKim. Clerk, Deckard. Clerk, Crossley. Commissioners, Deckard. Commissioners, Wilts. Coroner, Iverson. Council Office, Wilts. Courts, Iverson. Courts, McKim. Emergency Management, Munson. Extension, Iverson. Health, Iverson. Highway, Crossley. Highway, Hawk. Human Resources, Wilts. Jail, Crossley. Jail, Munson. Legal, Wilts. Parks and Recreation, Munson. Planning, McKim. Probation, Crossley. Probation, Iverson. Prosecutor, Deckard. Prosecutor, Iverson. Public Defender, Crossley. Recorder, Crossley. Sheriff, Crossley. Sheriff, Deckard. Soil and Water Conservation District, Deckard. Stormwater Management, Hawk. Surveyor, McKim. Technical Services, McKim. Treasurer, Hawk. Veterans Affairs, Deckard. Waits and Measures, Wilts. Youth Services Bureau, Munson. And I've got some more, I believe. BDC Membership, McKim. Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, McKim. Community Corrections Advisory Board, Iverson. Convention and Visitors Commission, Iverson. Criminal Justice Review Committee, Crossley. Criminal Justice Review Committee, Iverson. Criminal Justice Review Committee, Wilts. Dispatch Policy Board, Munson. Downtown Bloomington Commission Board, McKim. Emergency Management Advisory Council, Munson. Environmental Commission, Iverson. Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission, Munson. Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, Deckard. Income Tax Council PS Lit Committee, Hawk. Income Tax Council PS Lit Committee, McKim. Internal Control Committee, Hawk. Metropolis, Metropolitan, pardon me, Planning Organization, Wilts. Monroe County Fair Board, Munson. Monroe County Fire Protection District, Hawk. Monroe Fire Protection District, Iverson. Personnel Administration Committee, Hawk. Personnel Administration Committee, Iverson. Personnel Administration Committee, McKim. Plan, Plan Commission, McKim. Redevelopment Commission, McKim. Solid Waste Management District Board, Munson. Sophia Travis Grants Committee, Crossley. Sophia Travis Grants Committee, Deckard. Sophia Travis Grants Committee, Munson. Women's Commission, Crossley.
Second.
Are there any council comments on the very long list of appointments? Yes, Counselor Hawk?
I would certainly like a list of those. Will they be sent to those guys who don't have them?
Meaning me?
Absolutely. We can do that, and we'll be making it public as well. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then let's have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Wilts?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have another important part of county council business to take care of, and that is appointment of citizen members to boards and commissions. We have several, I believe, Counselor Deckard, to reappoint right now.
Yeah, Council, I move approval of the following citizen appointments to boards and commissions. Skip Daly, Board of Zoning Appeals, term four-year, expires 1/1/2026. Colin McCarty, Redevelopment Commission, term one-year, expires 1/1/2023. Iris Kiesling, Redevelopment Commission, term one-year, expires 1/1/2023. Joshua Johnson, Sophia Travis Grant Committee, term one-year, expires 1/1/2023. Reed Adams, Traffic Commission, term two-year, expires 12/31/2023.
Second.
Are there any council comments? Are there any counsel comments? Okay, I saw Cheryl, Counselor Munson first.
I just want to comment for the public that there will be other appointments made in the future for other boards, commissions, and committees. So if you have an interest in serving, please look at the applications and learn about the various boards and commissions that could use your input. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hawke, did you have?
Yes, I don't know everyone on the list, but several I do know, and I'm very happy to support those folks.
Fantastic. Any other comments or questions? I just wanted to add to what Counselor Munson mentioned. We have openings on the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, the Environmental Commission, Sophia Travis Grant Committee, and as well as three open positions on the Women's Commission, and these are really important groups that are doing incredible work in our community. So please, if you know anyone who is interested, send them our way either to the county government website or even just personally. Let us know who we can have apply for these positions. Let's then have a roll call vote to reappoint these folks.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We now are on to item nine on our agenda with the probation department.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and additional appropriations in Fund 81609622, Justice Partners, in the amount of $2,550 in the Supplies category and $57,450 in the Services category for a total of $60,000.
Second.
Are there any questions from counsel? I just noticed that Troy Hatfield is on. I guess I should have introduced you. I apologize. I'm new here, and it looks like Linda Brady is also here. There you are. You moved. Zoom is so confusing sometimes. And we have Chelsea Waters and Becca Streit. Is it Streit or Street?
It's Becca Streit.
Right.
Right.
Writing right.
That's, that's the German pronunciation. There we go. Thank you for being here, and if you'd like to add anything before we have questions, please go right ahead.
Yeah, counsel, we're here tonight. We have several grants to present to you for appropriation. The first one is our Justice Partners Grant, and we received this grant from the Indiana Office of Court Services. It is passed through money that comes from the Department of Mental Health and Addiction. They have a larger grant that's coming from the federal government to help out with various aspects for different communities, but what we are focusing on in our community with this grant money is kind of our reentry population. So we're looking at incarcerated individuals locally. And what this grant does is it hires a recovery coach that works with Centerstone. They go into the jail and those who are identified to be, that are going to be coming out of the jail into our community within a certain length of time, they start working with them early on on a transition accountability plan. And that plan is basically kind of a roadmap on different things that the client can do once they are out into the community to hopefully be successful in that transition. And it serves also as a, you know, a warm handoff to the services in the community from once they are released from incarceration. So this program has been going on for a couple of years, and it's a renewal of that grant. We hope to continue on in the future. We're hoping that they will continue to provide funding to the counties for projects such as this, and we'd appreciate it if the council would appropriate this grant for us.
That sounds great. Are there any comments or questions from counsel? I see none, so. Oh, you do? Sorry, Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I just, I was waiting to see if we had more comments from Linda Brady or the rest of our folks there.
I would just say that the grant is on the agenda as the SEM grant sequential intercept model. You probably remember those words from the consultant report. And our county chose in the sequential intercept model to focus on the reentry part and trying to do what they call a warm handoff to make sure that people get some services while they're in the jail and that we follow them when they come out onto community supervision. So that's where you've probably have seen the SEM before, and you'll hear a lot more about that, I'm sure, in the future as we work with our consultants with the criminal justice plan. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Iverson.
Yeah, I had a question about the transition accountability plans, the TAPs. Those are currently being done, correct? Or is this new with this current grant?
So yeah, this is currently being done with those people who are identified for this program. Not everybody is kind of identified. It really depends on whether they're going to be released into the community and what kind of services are going to be provided once they're released. So we, the program works with the courts as well as in the community supervision, if that's ordered on their way out.
And Troy, can you refresh my memory? How many, how many persons are we talking about per year that fit the criteria of the program?
Oh, goodness. I did not look at those numbers before I jumped on. I apologize. You know, I think in the past year, it's been somewhere around between 50, 75. And Linda, is that close? I don't.
It sounds about right. Right, we can, the, the primary population that we serve are the persons in the new beginnings program in the jail. So they start their treatment in the jail and then get the reentry services or what we call the warm handoff after they get released from the new beginnings program. And I just noticed also our, our team leader, Judge DeKoff, has joined. I don't know if Judge DeKoff has anything else to say about the program.
Oh, I don't think so. Thank you. Not at this time. Thank you.
So we've, I just looked in, since New Beginning started, there's been about 233 referrals into that program that at least we know of that are coming on to supervision, on the community supervision afterwards. So a large portion of those are involved in this program as well to be identified for that warm handoff and try to receive those services and get tied into services in the community as soon as they're released.
Excellent. Thank you all.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Counselor Hawke.
Yes, can you tell me how stable you believe this grant is? I know that we're running into problems, so. And does this, does this grant require us to do any other things that will cost that we need to provide financing for?
Yeah, so there's, there's no match money with this grant. This is the third year of the grant, and each year we've been awarded 60,000. In fact, that is the amount that's offered to all 92 counties. When I posed that question to our funding body, the response that I received is that they anticipate the MHA, Department of Mental Health and Addiction, is going to continue working with the judiciary and providing this funding at least for another year. But beyond that, they don't know because it's also tied to federal funding that is sent to them. So, but we are very hopeful that it'll last at least one more year after this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from counsel? Okay, let's, if we could, please have a roll call vote.
Actually, I think that one gets public comment.
There should be some public comment. Is there any? I, I see Jim Shelton has his hand raised.
Good evening again, counsel. As a casa, I certainly encourage you to approve this. I've been doing this for over nine years. All my cases have involved the use of drugs, and a bunch of the parents have ended up incarcerated for a while. The case I alluded to a little while ago, where the parents were successful in overcoming their addictions and had been reunited with their little four-year-old is a perfect example. So anything like this that we can do to help these people get over their addiction problem, some of them have had mental health problems, is a wonderful opportunity to help people and therefore a tool that will help children who are in the juvenile justice system probably. So please support this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Or any other public comment? I believe now we could have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson. Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
If we could move to item B then.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and additional appropriations in Fund 91380000, Veterans Court Grant, in the amount of $76,223 in the personnel category.
Second.
So counsel, this grant is our Veterans Court Grant. We have received this every year for the past quite a few years. I can't remember how many years total. But this pays for a probation officer to work in our Veterans Court, have a caseload of veterans that are admitted into the problem-solving court. So this funding, in anticipation of your question, this funding is a little bit more relatively stable than other funding in many ways because one, it is a grant from the judiciary, but this is an actual line item in the state budget that is, has so far been renewed with each biennial, but, or with each biennial budget by the state. So we feel like this is a very stable grant, should continue on in the future with no problems that we foresee or have ever been aware of. But again, this pays for the salary and benefits, 100%, no match money of a probation officer to work in our problem-solving court, specifically to work in the Veterans Court.
Thank you. Are there any questions from counsel? Is there any public comment? Seeing then, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, and now we have item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and additional appropriations in Fund 9140000, Pre-Trial Program Grant, in the amount of $92,038 in the personnel category.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Linda Brady. I'm the Chief Probation Officer for the Monroe Circuit Court. And as you already mentioned, we have a team here to talk about this grant and as well as to talk about and answer your questions about the pretrial program. We have our team leader, Judge DeKoff. We have Troy Hatfield, Deputy Chief Probation Officer, Becca Streit, Deputy Chief Probation Officer, Community Corrections Director, and also Chelsea Walters, who is the pretrial program director. Additionally, the public defender, Michael Hunt, is here as well as Heather Stopp from his office, who's the financial person who is the one who sends the request for reimbursement to the state for the public defender fund. So I'll just start out with, this grant we've received for the past five years is awarded by the Indiana Office of Court Services to our local court to provide pretrial services. We started out with just one position for the, the deputy public defender funded by this grant, and it was expanded a couple of years later to add a full-time pretrial probation officer. It also funds a part-time probation officer assistant for the project. This grant pays for only the salaries and fringe benefits and pays for no other items, no other supplies, services, or anything else. We started receiving this grant funding in 2016 because we are one of the 11 original pilot counties for pretrial in Indiana. And so we were very lucky. We got in on the ground floor being one of the pilot counties. But for 2022, the Indiana Office of Court Services opened up the grant process to all pretrial programs that are, if they're a certified pretrial program or if they're in the process of becoming certified. So quite a few more counties, and I don't know the number of counties that fit that bill, but it was quite a few more, you can say, than the original 11. And Troy mentioned about the Veterans Court Grant being a state budget line. Unlike this grant, pretrial services is funded out of the Indiana Supreme Court and the Indiana Office of Court Services operating budget. There is no state budget line item for this grant, and there was no additional money given to Indiana Office of Court Services or the Supreme Court for pretrial in the last biennial budget. So Monroe County's pretrial services grant, we received notice two days before the grant was supposed to go into effect. So on December 30th, we received notice from the Indiana Office of Court Services that our grant was going to be cut by about 50% from what we had applied for and what we anticipated receiving for the next year. So I'm going to turn this over to Troy Hatfield, who's going to explain the money piece. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So again, like Linda said, is that we have received this grant for quite, quite a few years, and we've been given no notice or indication whatsoever that this grant would be cut. Our request was for $183,390, and that would be pay, you know, the full-time salaries and benefits of the two staff members as well as some part-time assistants. And then what we received was $92,038. So that's a $91,352 shortfall between what we requested and what we expected, quite frankly, as into what we received. Just a little bit of history, counting this most recent grant, we have received nearly $800,000 from the Indiana Office of Court Services for pretrial services over the years. And in addition to that, we also receive about almost $275,000 from the Department of Correction to help us with our pretrial services programs. And as a result, since we started pretrial services in 2016, we have completely funded this program using grants, 100% using grants and a small portion of user fees. You know, we haven't needed to request funding from any other sources for this program. But again, unfortunately, they cut the grant. They did two things. One is they capped benefits at 30% of a salary. So that's a shortfall of about $7,000 in the one salary they did fund, the probation officer that's in there, the pretrial services officer. And then they capped funding for public defense at $15,000 for salary and benefit. And our understanding is that they did that across the board with all applicants, again, without any warning to us that that was going to happen. Just to give you a little idea, over the past five years, this program has provided a service to over 9,000 defendants, pretrial defendants that have come in or that have been arrested in our county, where we have gone in and done assessments and been able to provide the court with additional information so that they can make an informed decision about what to do at those initial hearings and those bail hearings. And, you know, as a result, we have a 90, an over 92%. And, you know, as a result, we have a 90, an over 92% appearance rate. There's two goals for a pretrial program is, one, having people show up for court, and two, to stay out of trouble while their case is pending, you know, not get rearrested. And I'm very proud to say that our overall appearance rate for our pretrial defendants is over 92% for all of their hearings, which is a fantastic number for us to have. And of those people that we assess, those people that are low risk in terms of having some slip-ups while they're under pretrial release, over 90% of those individuals get through their pretrial period without any new arrests, without any, you know, slip-ups or problems. I feel like we do an excellent job with our program, and we've got a few more people that can talk to you a little bit more about that with Becca Strite as well, is going to save you comments.
Good evening. So as Linda mentioned, for this grant period for 2022, one of the requirements for applying for the grant from different counties was that they either be certified by the state or be in the process of being certified. We received our certification in 2021 after being a pilot county for so long. And the state of Indiana bases their certification on several things, but they primarily base it on some national initiative corrections and the National Association of Pretrial Service Agencies. They have national standards for what an effective pretrial program should look like. And there's, there's several things in that framework. But one of them, one of the, one of the more important things is always having defense counsel present at first appearance hearings. That is a requirement not only of being a certified program, but it's also best practices. And since the beginning, when we started in 2016, we have had a fabulous partnership with the public defenders office. They have been at every stakeholder meeting, at the table, providing input from their side of things. And in talking to other counties who have been doing pretrial work, a lot of them talk about having an adversarial relationship with their public defenders or their defense attorney stakeholders. And here in Monroe County, we have never had that. We have had a fabulous partnership. In keeping in the spirit of that best, those best practices set by the, by the, by the nation and different agencies, there's two primary reasons why having defense counsel at first appearance is vital. One is it provides, of course, representation and advocacy for our defendants. Pretrial assessors and our pretrial staff, they attend hearings, they provide the information to the court, but we have a very limited role. We're not attorneys. We can't answer questions about a defendant's case. So we refer and defer to the expertise of the defense counsel. The other big reason that defense counsel is there is, well, the prosecutor gets to be there or has to be there, and the prosecutor gets to say their piece and having defense counsel on behalf of our pretrial defendants, just as a fairness issue. So we're, we're sad to have this cut specifically for the public defenders because, again, we've had a fabulous working partnership with them and will continue to do so. They've been such a vital piece to our pretrial project.
I know Judge DeKoff and Michael Hunt are both here. I don't know if either of them want to say anything else about the grant as well.
I think the presentation made by everybody else is extremely accurate, and we did not see this coming. We were given no notice at all that this grant was going to be cut as drastically it has been cut. And it is, it's detrimental to pretrial, and it's, it's going to affect it if we cannot have a public defender in the courtroom. Having that public defender in the courtroom is extremely beneficial when we're assessing somebody's release, getting their questions answered, and being able to move forward more quickly, more efficiently, and most importantly, so that everybody in the room is, has the representation that they need and is able to be able to, and the court has individuals to ask questions of, the defendant can ask questions. And it, it's vital to the program and to the success of the, of the program. And we have a very, very successful pretrial program. And it's due to that, the cooperation to the, the team that meets, there's a broader team than just us that meets to see that this is done and how it's done. And we were surprised by this, and we're bringing it to your attention tonight because we, we, it's important that you're aware that we were anticipating this grant to be what this grant was, and it has now been cut in half. And without that, the ability to have a public defender in the courtroom, it's going to severely impact the pretrial program.
Counselor McKim, do you have a question?
Yes, I also have comments, but, but my question is about caseload. So is, so this position that's been funded by the pretrial grant, does it, does that person who's in that position handle, spend all of their, all of their time on counsel at first appearance? Or is the counsel at first appearance caseload kind of distributed again across multiple public defenders?
Yeah, in, in response to that, we decided to distribute it over everybody in the office, basically. And so for the past five years, we've been using that person or that position to carry part of the caseload. If we don't have that position, then we're out of compliance with the commission standards, which means I would come and ask the council to fund an attorney's position because if we're out of compliance, the commission then notifies us and notifies the council that we have so much time to try to get into compliance. And if not, then we lose basically a million dollars a year. I don't want that to happen. We think that position of pretrial is, is important for all the reasons noted. And I think all the statistics show that everybody comes out better if, if you have, let's say, equal sides in the courtroom. You have the judge and the prosecutor there, and the defendant who, this is their first time in court, and they're, most of them are really lost at that time. So any questions we can answer or assist or help them present their case to the judge, even though this is maybe the first time we've met them, helps their case. And I suppose, well, I don't even know if you could hire somebody for $15,000 just to do that. I, I can't imagine that. But as I said, we, we use that attorney and then they do all type of cases. So it's vital to our operation to have this position. I would say something else, and I think Mr. McKim asked in an email. The commission has also done a study and are revising some of the caseload standards. It doesn't change our position a lot, but I, we are always close to that line of being in compliance. And I think we may, under the new standards, may be a little under compliant, compliance. They expected the new standards to take place in January of 2023, but because some counties are going to have difficulty, if they know that the county is attempting to qualify, they're, they won't make it mandatory until January 2024. So my thought on that was to wait at least half of this year or more and see what our statistics are and see where we are before I have to approach the council for another attorney in, possibly in 2024. And I don't know, you can't tell, just based on caseloads, how those are, are going to turn out. So we definitely need this position, and we would come and ask the county for, I guess, the balance of the money to fund the salary for that position. I'm open for questions.
Yeah, and then my, and so my understanding is that depending on how you organize the caseload, at best, we would anticipate a 40% reimbursement on the, I mean, at, at the, at the most, we would anticipate a 40% reimbursement on the county-funded portion of that position. Like I said, depending on how the caseload was, was organized. And I think that's just important for the, my, my colleagues, just, we just kind of need to set, you know, set a boundary on what we possibly would think we'd be able to get out of reimbursement unless the reimbursement standards change.
No, well, that's always possible. And one of the goals of the commission this year, and then going into the next legislative thing, is to get money for misdemeanors, which would help us because we get 40% on most cases except for misdemeanors. Then we have to make a deduction because part of our time is spent on misdemeanors. They're also modifying some things on juvenile, some juvenile cases, shins cases, which are children in need of services, termination cases. And some of those reimbursements may go up a little bit, but that's not assured. So yes, we would get some reimbursement, 40% is the max, it would be somewhat lower than that.
And these counsel at first appearance cases are considered, are reimbursed at 40% as well. Is that?
It will be, it will be if the, if the money comes from the county and not.
Right, yeah, we don't get a reimbursement for a grant. Right, absolutely.
That's correct.
Thanks. I'll defer to my colleagues here.
Counselor Iverson?
Well, while it's certainly wonderful that so many other communities are taking advantage of pretrial services, it's very disappointing to hear that this was cut so drastically without it, any notice. Have we been given any reassurances that they're looking at the situation so that in the future, that when we're submitting this grant, that we can be, you know, thinking about it in terms of what we have been doing historically? Or is this the new normal?
Well, I can tell you, they've received plenty of feedback from across the state about the process this year. So, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure how to respond to that. I can't, you know, speak for the judiciary if they're going to ask for money in the next budget cycle with the state legislature, but of course, that's going to be, you know, they won't have any of those talks until 2023.
Yeah.
Because this is a short session. So it, it's very hard to say. I know that we are going to plan, plan for this type of thing for the next year because there's only going to be a larger number of counties who are getting certified in their pretrial services program, which makes them eligible for grant funding. So we're going to work diligently on plans over this next coming year to figure out what we can do to keep our pretrial services running at, at that full capacity.
Thank you.
Counselor Hock?
Yes. First of all, let's just remember, step back a few years, and we were awarded, we were going to be the pilot, we were going to be one of the pilot counties. And so we made sure that we were successful, right? Isn't that what, what you folks do? And guess what? Your success scored throughout the state, and now everybody wants a piece of the pie. And the pie's not really growing a whole lot, but because we told everybody what a great thing this was, and they saw it happening, they wanted to be a part of it. So first of all, I think we should not be sitting here with sad faces. We were successful in what we were allowed to do during the pilot time. Now, I believe if you, if we could have just opened our minds to understand that everybody was going to do just what they did, want to be a part of it, and you can only just get so many people on that merry-go-round. So what am I saying here? I'm saying congratulations, you did a great job. And kudos to you. Now, where do we go from here? And why do I believe, and might get, I may be so wrong on this, but the state is now discussing the fact that they believe they made a huge mistake in trying to send the Level 6 back to the counties. Now, I know we don't, Monroe County did not normally send our Level 6 to DOC anyway, but the other counties did, you know? They were going to do whatever they could to get them out of their jail. Well, then the state says, no, counties, you take them back. The counties didn't, the other counties couldn't afford, didn't have room in their jail, whatever. And it seems to me that they're figuring out a way to get some of those folks, hey, Gold Monroe County, they've got all those great things to help you out. And, and so we don't know what the outcome of that's going to be. But if indeed the state decides that they are going to be reversing their decision about the Level 6, and then more of those folks will be going back to the state, and in part, they're saying so they can get more help with drug addictions and so forth. See how that works. But then they're going to have to find the money to do this. And I see the state will be doing some major cuts of what they had sent to us to help combat all of the Level 6's coming back. That's, I may be way wrong on that, and I guess we'll only, time will tell us. But I just wanted to let you folks know that we appreciate what you've done to be successful, even if it did mean we're going to lose some money. It's fun to do it.
Counselor McKim?
I, I guess the other thing I have to say just about the, you know, about grants from the state is that, you know, it's, it's still not free money. I mean, it's still basically the same taxpayers who are paying for, for the services. You know, it's still the residents of, of Indiana at least who are, who are paying and businesses who are paying those taxes that are supporting money coming from the state. So, you know, I, in some ways, it's, it's, it's a little bit six of one, half a dozen of the other, unless we're, you know, essentially making money off of other, other counties who are underfunding their services. And I don't think we want to encourage that either. So I guess I'm essentially agreeing with Counselor Hock and saying, congratulations, you know, we've, we've, we've done a great job. I will say that, that I, I think this program is incredibly important. This is what it mean, when we say innocent until proven guilty, that's, that's what pretrial release means, and we have to be willing to operationalize that. If we say we believe in that concept, we have to operationalize it with services and, and resources. So, I mean, I definitely assume we will see a, an additional appropriation request to continue to fund this position. And, you know, I'm anticipating supporting that, that request. But, but, and I, and I think it is a valid investment for us to make out of, out of local funds. I think the, the data that the program has gathered is, has been really informative and well substantiated and has proved, provided real value for the residents of Monroe County.
Counselor Iverson?
I, I wanted to echo Counselor McKim's comments. This is foundational to our community, and I think this program is very, very important and certainly has my support, but not only for this appropriation, but I'm interested also to see what's coming down the pike as well. So keep on up with the good work, and it certainly, I think, is very important for us. Thank you.
Counselor Deckard?
I wanted to add in something here to, to the other comments, that the speed and dispatch with which you all have very innovatively gone after these grants is also represents the speed and dispatch with which you have informed the council about this. And I appreciate the foresight of, you literally have done everything possible to not only go after the money, create the program, which others now enjoy, but, but go after those dollars, stay tuned to those dollars. And it's really on the state end, not notifying us any sooner that, that it wasn't going to be this way, that, that really maybe, maybe things could have been handled a little bit different. We're going to have to think innovatively about things, but that is what you all have done, and I, I just want to make that note. Usually I'm the one, one of the ones in here talking about, look at these grant dollars that come in and help. These are still grant dollars, but this is a good thing for. But this is a good thing for all of us to be thinking about. If things federally, state level, they change, they affect us, much like a lot of things right now are affecting the community. So thank you.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes, of course, this is, this would be a hard grant to turn down. I think we've got to be proactive in looking at all of our grants to make sure how, as we lose dollars, that we can try to work around the people so that we're not having to lay people off, that we're, we're working within the dollars that we have. And we don't know how bad this might get. Depends on what the, you know, we're at the mercy of the people who are allowing the grants. But I would just suggest, as I know that you will, you're going to be looking at every one of these grants. You're going to be looking at how you can rearrange your staffing levels and, and the services that we provide to the public. And so I wish you well. And just know that there's no way we can make up every lost grant. I mean, you know that, for people who look at these budgets, the county cannot make up for every lost grant if we would lose a lot. Just not going to happen. We could vote for it until we all go broke, I guess, but.
Thanks, Counselor Hawke. Are there any other, oh, Counselor Crossley.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of the other counselors as well. And as a new person here on the block, it definitely is really startling to hear that this was happening without any type of notice at all. And, you know, just writing down the stats of how successful everything is definitely gives me hope for this. And I'm more than happy to lend my support to this. And also as a liaison as for probation, I definitely look forward to working with each of you to help out in, in any way that I can. So I just wanted to just say those comments here.
Thanks, are there any other council questions or comments on this item? Well, I just wanted to add that I very much appreciate your being here tonight and really taking the time to explain the situation. It's, it's, it's impactful when we hear directly from you and, and have the opportunity to kind of work through and understand the hows and whys of, of what's going on with this. So, um, thank you. And let's appropriate what we have and get, get thinking on how we can keep this program going for the future. Could we have a, a roll call vote, please?
Public comment?
Oh, darn it, a public comment. Any public comments?
Maybe the public has some ideas on this.
Please comment, public. No co- okay. Now, a roll call vote, please.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much for all your attention and help.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you. We have another item, don't we, under this?
Yeah, JD AI.
Yeah, or items.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and appropriations in Fund 91460000 JD AI, JD AI Performance Grant in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars in the services category.
Second.
Okay, so on a lighter note, we were awarded another grant, and this is for our Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative. And just as a reminder, we've been involved with the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Program for, well, since 2014. We've been a site and a partner with the state on, basically working on alternatives to detention so that the youth in our community, that we can hopefully safe, safely keep them in our communities where there are services, where there are families, where there are relationships to create some, a, a better outcome for them once they become involved in our system. So because we do pretty well with that program, the state rated us as an exceptional site. And then that kind of opened up the door for bonus grant dollars. So we applied and we received, and this is one-time money, that doesn't require any match, we received ninety-five thousand dollars in bonus grant dollars out of that competitive kind of grant program because of our exceptional status. With that, what we want to do with this is work with two contractors. One is the Center for Children's Law and Policy. And we've actually been working with them for a while, but the state has been paying their, for their services to help us kind of look at diversion options for youth in our community. So we know that once they get into the juvenile justice system, it's very hard for them to get out. You know, it's, it's often times that there's kind of a lot of cycling through. If we can identify appropriate use that we can divert from the system and get them services that doesn't necessarily involve us, but that'll also bring about some success in their lives and create a positive outcome, we really want to work towards that. And CCLP helped design some recommendations for us and what we can do with our, for diverting more youth from the system. And what this grant will do is have them work with us to help implement some of those strategies over the next six months to a year and try to put forth some really good action plans that we can move forward with. The other one is a contract with Laura Fur Consulting, which we have also worked with in the past. And what she does and helps us with is engaging youth and families in the process. So some of these things and plans that we have in terms of diversion or other things that are going on in, in the juvenile justice system, we really want to engage our youth and families to help us design those programs for those youth and families. We need that input, that community engagement, and she really helps us plan for that, get the families involved. And then what this is really going to help us do is create that sustainability for the long term. So once this grant money goes away, that we can continue that community engagement over the long term. So that's what we anticipate using these funds for. Again, it's one-time money, and these are one-time kind of MOUs that we'll be working with these contractors to help us with our plans moving forward. And we hope that you will support us in that effort.
Great, thank you, Counselor Iverson.
Just wanted to point out that it's always nice to get feedback. And to be called exceptional by a state review is wonderful. So congratulations, this is a great award, it's a great program, great staff, congratulations, this is great.
Counselor Munson.
Yeah, and we wouldn't be able to do that without the support from, you know, Judge Galvin and the Board of Judges to help us with this effort. And there's support over the years of going through these different options that we've tried to, to create and move forward with. It's been, it's been a great journey.
Counselor Munson.
I just wanted to congratulate the probation department on this particular grant, but also to highlight that congratulations are also in order for all the other continued funding. We're talking about a total here of more than two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. That probation, working with, with the judges and the prob- problem-solving courts, working with the public defender on pretrial services. And we have, we have a great team in Monroe County, and I want to thank you all for the work that you do.
Are there any other questions from council? Is there any public comment? All right, could we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much for your time and attention, counsel. We really appreciate all the support that you give us.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Let's move to the next item, which is from our Technical Services Department, item ten.
Counsel, I move to approve the Technical Services Department's request for a midpoint hire of the support technician in Fund 11380000 Cumulative Capital Development Fund. And to simultaneously amend the 2022 salary ordinance is account line 13291, support technician, forty hours, PAT B, non-exempt, to midpoint hire status with an effective date of January 16th, 2022.
Second.
Welcome, Eric Evans.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Twenty twenty-one was a bit of a rebuilding year for tech services. We had a retirement, we had a couple people take other gigs. And so we were lucky to get some good replacements. I think this is going to be the final one to make our team whole again. The candidate is very experienced, they've been doing this kind of work for well over ten years. And so as such, being able to move new people to a midpoint hire when they present industrial experience i- is a good way to recruit and retain people. So that's, that's what I'm looking to do here. And hopefully you guys will agree with me on that.
Okay, are there any questions, Mr. Evans, on the midpoint hire? Counselor Hawke.
Yes, as I reviewed the information about this applicant, I was delighted to see, if I read it correctly, that he's a veteran. Is that correct, Mr. Evans?
She is a veteran, yes.
And so anytime that we can assist the veterans by making sure that they are gainfully employed, it's something they love doing, and obviously this person does. I'm just delighted to support this.
It, it does seem to be a good fit. She definitely seems to be happier in our environment than she does working for, you know, she had been doing contract work for the industrial war complex. So, you know, we're a little bit more laid back than that in the tech services office.
That's a good thing. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this issue? Could we please have a roll call vote then, please?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Uh, yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we have item eleven from our auditor's office.
Counsel, I move to approve the auditor's request to create a new account line, three seven five five six right-of-way consultation in each of the following funds, eight one six one dash zero 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 sample road phase one, eight one six two zero 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 sample road phase two, eight one six five zero 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 Bernal Pike, eight one six six zero 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 Rockport Bridge, eight one six seven zero 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 Baby Creek Bridge, and eight one six nine zero 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 Fullerton Pike.
Second.
Um, and it looks like we have Bree Gregory, our financial director for the county.
Good evening, counsel. I'm here tonight requesting approval to create a new account line in each of the funds listed moments ago, just to help us with end-of-year reporting for our 1099 requirement. Currently, all expenses related to real estate are grouped together in one right-of-way line. Creating the second consultation line will kind of separate actual real estate costs, costs from other costs like consultation, for example, just, you know, for ease of reporting at the end of the year when we're sending out, well, beginning of the year, when we're sending out the 1099s. So, yes, I'm just asking for your approval to go ahead and take care of this kind of housekeeping item. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hawke, did you have a question?
I was just going to say this is a housekeeping item, but, but Ms. Gregory got that out there. So it doesn't like, it's not going to be spending any more money. This is just a way to keep track of and do what, of course, the state would require us to do as well.
Absolutely, as Counselor Hawke said, this is just a best practice sort of move.
Great, any other questions from Ms. Gregory? Is there any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, could we please have a roll call vote?
Oh, this cold path.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. And our next item is item number twelve with our health department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to approve the school liaison job description and simultaneously amend the 2022 salary ordinance in Fund 81110000 Crisis COAG Supplemental Workforce Grant and add account line 10124, school liaison, thirty-five hours, PAT A, non-exempt.
Second.
Great, Ms. Cottle, do you have some information for us?
Yes, very quick, we talked about this in earlier meetings. We received a substantial grant from the Indiana Department of Health to support our schools during COVID. One of the requirements is that we hire a school liaison to help coordinate the Health Department and help that we have with the schools. So we finished with, this was sent off to WIS for classification, and we would like to be able to finally get it filled so that we can begin moving forward with, with that help. We are working on the other elements and the MOUs that we'll need to have with the schools as well, that we can certainly get things started before we have those things in place.
Fantastic, Counselor Deckard.
Thank you very much, I just wanted to make a really quick comment as a recent PAC member, changes tonight with the, the appointment process. As a recent PAC member that, we're going through a little bit of a different process here to move this on as quick as we possibly can with this WIS recommendation coming back, foregoing a second PAC meeting. That seemed to be the will and intentions of the PAC committee while we're here in council to move as quick as we can, which Administrator Cottle talked very well about earlier, everything going on. This is a small thing that we can do, I look forward to voting yes on this here shortly.
Thank you, Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I wanted to add congratulations to the PAC because we could see the urgency and we saw no need to drag this out. It's a grant position, it's not like it's, if it's going to affect other classifications, and we need to get this person on board and, and getting after this. And so congratulations to the Health Department for even receiving this wonderful grant. And congratulations to the council for being willing to. And congratulations to the Council for being willing to move this quickly.
Thank you. Councillor Iverson?
As another member of PAC, I just wanted to say how timely this is. You can see the school dashboard on the state's website. It is so important that we are doing this, and congratulations to the Health Department for reading the tea leaves or whatever magic you're doing over there, but this is wonderful. Let's get this done.
Yeah, this is definitely an important position at an important time. Are there any other questions or comments from Council members? Great. Well, is there a public comment? Okay, seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
I think Councillor Hawke may have had something to say. She had her hand raised.
Thank you.
I'm muted, Marty. I'm trying to, okay. This was really more sort of a public comment because it's really not part of the council comment. As the mother of a teacher, what I hear from her nearly every day is how she agonizes over her students who are getting so far behind because of the COVID and how many, how much they've lost. She teaches 5th grade, and she says some of these people, her students are two years behind, and it's just going to be almost impossible to get them up to where they need to be. That time has just escaped them. And so this is just so important that we do whatever we can to help some of these folks get extra tutoring or whatever they need to try to get caught up. It's just important, not just for their future, but for the entire country's future.
Just. Indeed. I believe we are ready for a roll call vote then.
Councillor Hawke?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Councillor McKen?
Yes.
Councillor Crossley?
Yes.
Councillor Duckard?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have item 13 from the Council Office.
Council, I move to approve the request to amend the Merit Deputy Grid with the Correct WIS Increase Grids for 2022 with an effective date of December 19, 2021.
Second.
And Ms. Shell, would you like to talk to us a little bit about this item?
Yes. When Council approved the salary grids back in November, they were looking at some different scenarios. And so I was instructed to use, it was called the WIS Increase Salary Grid. And so when I put together the amendments for Council to approve on December 21, I captured the wrong merit poll grid. That grid included the salary, the WIS salary increase plus a 2% increase on top of that. So that is the wrong merit poll grid. And so this is just going to bring the grid information back to what Council initially approved and wanted done back in November. So that's why I need this amendment, so we can have the correct amount. The Sheriff's Department is the one that found it, and we have looked and proofed it, and yes, it all matches, and this is the correct one that was in the pack.
Okay, great. Are there any Council questions or comments on this issue? Councillor McKen?
I guess I'll just appreciate the Sheriff's Department bringing this to our attention and their close eye on this and very glad that it was caught early before any payroll was actually paid out, and we'd have to consider making adjustments. So at least it was caught early.
Councillor Hawke?
Yes, I have concern that it might have been some of the staff there who would have have thought that this was the correct salary, because I know before all of it came down at the end, people were checking with the different departments and seeing, look, do you have any questions? And are you comfortable with this? Is there anything you've? And so I was concerned when I got this message that perhaps there were those in the Sheriff's Department who thought that they were, knew what they were going to get, and now it looks like as if they're not going to be getting that much. Is that the case? Am I, I mean, I don't know.
When we originally submitted the WIS increase to the Sheriff's Department, that was given to the union. And I worked with them with regards to that, and the only problem that they had was with the base salary being too low. And we worked with them, and along with, and I can't remember, it was one of the liaisons, I want to say it was Trent. But we worked with them, and so the WIS increase is what they agreed to, and they were happy with it. So it was actually one of somebody within the Sheriff's Department that noticed that it was different than the one that was originally submitted, so. So they're not having a problem with where it's at or what it's going to be, because that's what they originally, as a union, voted on, was that WIS increase.
Yes, Councillor Hawke?
Okay, I just wanted to say that I'm just not going to support this because I believe that those folks are still not making enough money. And if the budget worked out with these dollars in it, I'm just not in favor of reducing it for those folks. And you know what? And nobody has to agree with me. I can just, I'm just not going to support reducing it.
I just want to say that what was approved in the budget, that Council approved in the budget, is what the amounts that are used that you're looking at tonight. So that's the numbers, and that's how we found, working with Scott, the Financial Director, he goes, they don't match what we budgeted. So that's how it was discovered. And so I'm just saying you guys approved those amounts for 2022.
Okay. Are there any other questions from Council? Or any public comment?
I,
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I was late to the draw. I do want to say that, as I said to a group earlier this week, it takes many hands in county government by statute and by practice and all that, and this is a good example. It's maybe not the thing that we all wanted to, but it takes many hands to catch this, including, I'll say as one of the liaisons for this during this process, it should be me that sees that and accounts for that. And so I'll wear that with everybody else, but ultimately we vote on that. So it takes many hands, things to catch. Glad that we caught it now. I'm sure it's not the only mistake that we have made, and I'm sure there will be others. But the important thing is that those many hands caught this, we're moving forward, and I think figuring out what next steps are down the road. I'm sure there'll be something else we need to attend to, but that's the process by which it works. It's the way the state of Indiana set it up, Constitution and otherwise, and we just take these one step at a time. I do want to know, all that we did in the last year towards salaries, increases and discussions on fairness. We've had many discussions about fair processes, not making exceptions, being very diligent in that. That's a lot that we have accomplished, and we correct what we can as we go.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Duckard? Now, is there any public comment? Kim, do you have something to add?
Yes, I just want to remind the Council that this is a salary ordinance. And so if it doesn't pass unanimous, it will have to come back for a second vote.
Councillor McKen?
I just wanted to say I am going to vote for this, and I, you know, I do believe it was truly clerical error that we made that does need to be corrected, but I'm almost there with Councillor Hawke. I, you know, I see her point, and, you know, I think in principle, I do agree, and I, I'm certainly willing to continue to work on increasing the salaries for you know, for our law enforcement officers here, as well as our jail correctional officers and many other county employees, but I don't think doing that based on a clerical error is really the way I want to see it go, but I understand where Councillor Hawke is coming from.
Councillor Hawke?
Well, I really regret that we're going to have to bring this back another time, but I'm just not going to go on record saying I'm agreeing to reduce the salaries for law enforcement, so I just have to follow my heart. That's it. I mean, I saw some other changes happen at the meeting that I was not in attendance at, that I didn't agree with everything, and I agreed with part of it. So, you know, that's just the way it goes.
Our Counsel Attorney, Margie Rice, is on. Could you say something?
I just want to emphasize the point that Kim made, that the numbers she's asking you to vote on tonight are the numbers you voted on for the budget. So if you supported the Sheriff's Department budget, then you can support these numbers tonight. And every time you think about giving one department a 2% increase, think about the slippery slope that that has for your overall scheme of compensation for the county. So while it might sound good to say I want to give somebody a 2% increase, that has a domino effect. And I understand wanting to support law enforcement, but I believe all of the Council members, except Jennifer Crossley, who's new, supported the Sheriff's Department budget and these very numbers that you're being asked to support tonight. Now, if you don't vote on this tonight, and it has to go for a second vote, it'll just be a majority vote, that may or may not have payroll consequences for Jordan Miller. So just think about, you know, however you vote is how you vote. But, you know, your vote has consequences, and it may make a little bit more difficult work for Jordan Miller. So just like, just wanted to make those comments. And again, Kim could tell us, but I think everybody here voted to support these numbers during the budget.
Thank you. Ms. Rice? Are there any other questions or comments?
A call question?
I'm going to make one more comment, just so that I know that the department turned in the paperwork using the WIS increase without the 2% to Jordan for this. So if this doesn't pass tonight, I will have to work with him on how we need to correct that.
Look, folks, let's just vote, because I'm not going to change my mind, and you folks aren't either.
All right, let me make sure there is no public comment. I see none in the participant list, so if we could then have a roll call vote, please.
Councillor Duckard?
Yes.
Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Councillor Crossley?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor McKen?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor Hawke?
No.
Motion failed 6 to 1. Second reading necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to say technically the motion didn't fail. The motion passed with a majority, but requires a second reading.
Right. Thank you. And now we move to item 14 on our agenda, which is Council Comments. Are there any comments from Councilors interested? Okay. I saw Councillor Hawke's hand first.
Yes, first of all, Happy New Year, and congratulations to everyone on the Council for staying healthy, and here we are. One of the things I want, and I did send out an email some time back, not too long ago, with a concern and having to do with payroll, and so I hope that Jordan will be hearing this as well. Because we're tying the Chief Deputies to a percent of the salary of the elected officials. I believe that salary ordinance should also say that they will be paid at the same time that the elected officials will be paid. Because otherwise, you're going to end up in a real mess when you change over elected officials and the folks that's the Chief Deputies and so forth. Now, I remember when I tried to get people to listen about the fact that, because they were trying to also put the elected officials on the same schedule where they were going to be paid early. And as a matter of fact, somebody said to me, well, what difference does it make to you? And I'm going, well, because the state won't let us do that, because we're only allowed to pay that public official a certain dollar amount within the same year. So the same theory works. The Chief Deputy being tied to that elected official needs to be paid exactly with the same schedule as that elected official. So I'm just hoping that people will take a look at that if we may need to make an adjustment to that salary ordinance, or if it's something that payroll can just make an adjustment. But I hope that somebody will take a strong look at that, because we'll see a mess down the road.
Okay. I guess I would need to have more information on that topic because I'm not familiar with her concern exactly. So I'll take a look at that. Councillor Iverson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to remind everyone that our healthcare folks out there are absolutely exhausted. This variant, Omicron, on top of the Delta variant has really just made things very difficult for our neighbors working in the healthcare industry. Give them a break. Get your vaccine. Get tested. Wear your mask, socially distance. If you have questions, please look up the Monroe County Health Department on social media. While you're scrolling, you can find all the answers they have put out there. Or look at their website. They have a fantastic website with all of the most up-to-date answers that you can find. So please give our healthcare workers a break. Stay healthy, stay safe.
What advice, important words. Are there any other Council comments? I have a Council comment. And that is, we recently were notified that our attorney is leaving the county for greener pastures, I suppose. And that, I know, is going to leave a big hole in county government for everyone, but particularly for the Council, and it brings to the forefront some need for discussion and understanding about how we can move forward. So I was hoping that we could approach the subject this evening. If we needed to talk about it further later, we could do that, but I would like to make sure that we all are on the same page for next steps so that we don't delay finding legal representation for this body. To that end, I've asked Dave Schilling, the administrative attorney for the county, to talk a little bit with us and to answer any questions that counselors might have. So welcome.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here. And yeah.
Well, go ahead and let, I would, I would like to, we spoke. And so I would just like to hear kind of what your ideal plan maybe is for the next steps. And then maybe we could go from there if counselors have any questions.
Okay, well, the, the first step, I guess, is present the council resolution 202146, seeking approval to fill that position. And so we would do that, we would seek that today, request you to give that some consideration and hopefully come up with an answer shortly so that we can begin the process of advertising and interviewing, which, which takes some time. And we have about a little under three weeks before Margie is departing. As Kate said, we talked about that and as it stands now, all four attorneys are housed within the legal department, which is a Department of Monroe County Government. And I think Councilmember Hawk has expressed concerns about whether the fourth attorney should remain in the legal department. And we're happy to discuss that and, and hear your thoughts on that. With respect to advertising, we follow the county procedures. Interviews will be scheduled and we hope to have, of course, council participation in those interviews. And in the past, all the interviews for attorneys' positions result in a recommendation to the county commissioners who make the hiring decision. But the recommendations have always been reached by unanimous agreement of the legal department staff. So we, we involve everybody. We want everybody to be comfortable with, with whoever we hire to work with, to work with us. And we want all the elected officials or the commissioners, and in this case, we would hope the council would join us to, to feel comfortable about any recommendation we make. And I will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counselor Hawk?
I really don't have an objection to the council attorney working within the legal department. It would be not a great deal different than with the, with Michelle working within the auditor's department. Michelle is not under hiring or dismissal from the auditor, but from the council. And it seems to me that we should make certain that our legal representation is representing county council and, and report to the county council and not to the commissioners. Just so that if there's, if there's ever, and you know, a chance that the council might not fully agree with what commissioners are doing, or commissioners might not like what the council's doing, that we would feel 100% that our legal representation was representing the council. And as a reminder to folks, when you look at what is allowed, remember, we only get to do what the state says we get to do. You know, we, we think we're in charge. We're not really. And this, when the state says that the only group that's allowed to have their own legal representation, that's the council. Because the state recognizes it's a balancing act. It's supposed to be an even balance. Commissioners are not over the council. The council's not over the commissioners. We're supposed to be a balancing act. And so it's, it's my sincere hope that the, the trial that we put in place when we replaced the last legal representation, and this was a trial, for those of you who were here at the time. And this does not mean that we would have somebody that would come back into the office and have to manage the office because I know that's a concern for Mr. Schilling. But I, I just believe that the person hired should be in consultation with the legal department. But the final decision should be the county council and that the person hired would be reporting to the county council and not the commissioners.
I guess I have a question, Mr. Schilling, about
Yes.
possible and how, has that ever been done?
The legal department represents the county. And so we have many, many constituents that are part of the county that we provide legal counsel to. So, and it's always been done on, it's sort of an informed consent that people know that the information we obtain from the commissioners will be shared with the council and vice versa. And that's just the way it's always been done. The, I know Marty, you referred to it as an experiment, but for the bulk of my 36 years here, all the attorneys were in the legal department. It was only when Michael Florrie was taken out that the council had its own attorney. So that, that was the experiment in my mind.
It wasn't for us. We worked hard for that. The council members worked hard to have our own office, our own staff. And I was there, folks. That's, we worked hard for it.
Yeah. Well, the, so the, the attorney, if they're in the legal department, they will be representing, they will be deemed to be attorneys for every county and, you know, every county constituent. So, for example, right now Jeff Cockrell represents the auditor. But if the auditor walks in the door and Jeff's not here, I'll step in or one of the other attorneys will step in. So we provide counsel to offices, not exclusively. We have areas of concentration. We have clients that we spend more time with, but we are not anyone's exclusive attorney. And so that's just, that's the way it works. If, I mean, I guess we provide legal counsel to you and that's, that's what our position was created for, to, to give you legal guidance, not to, not to administer, not to engage in policy decisions, but to give you legal counsel. And so that's what we would do. You're the decision makers. If you decide a policy is acceptable or not and it's within your area of statutory authority, then you make the decision. And if there's ever a fight, if you ever want to sue the county commissioners, the legal department would step out of it. If the, if the county commissioners wanted to sue the council, the legal department would step out of it and, and you'd have to hire outside counsel. So that's just the way the, the office has been organized for, for, for many, many years. And so what you described, Marty, would be kind of a departure from that, from that scheme.
Well, it certainly was something that the state recognized is, is possible. And it gives the councils permission to do this. And, and we are the only ones in the county outside of the commissioners who are allowed to, to include that in our budgeting. And so, but I thank you for allowing me to have my say and I will acquiesce to whatever the group decides they wish to do.
Yeah. And I would note that the sheriff is also authorized to hire an attorney and, and does use outside counsel on occasion.
Right.
Yeah.
And we could do it that way, too. We could contract or something of the sort. I'm glad that what we did was we took time to at least review what our options are. And so thank you for allowing me to do that.
Counselor McKem?
So I definitely believe that having, at this point, I mean, we've, we've done it both ways now. You know, in, in my tenure and the tenure of, of a lot of my colleagues. And I do think that the advantages of having the county attorneys all be pooled in the legal department outweighs the, the disadvantages. You know, I, I think they are, they are able to work more efficiently. They're able to work more closely together. If the, the attorney who's primarily assigned to the county council doesn't have, you know, doesn't have things specifically for the council at that moment, they can be working on, on other cases as well. And I think that's really important to be able to get, get everything done we need to. I am partway towards where Marty is, not, not all the way. But, you know, I do think that the, that, as Marty mentioned, as Mr., as Dave Schilling confirmed, that, you know, we do have the specific statutory authority to hire attorneys. I think that needs to be recognized, even if that attorney happens to be pooled in county legal. So I just wonder if there's a way to kind of split the difference. If not, you know, to actually have that, this position, this attorney report to the county council, to still have them report to, through the normal chain of command. But for this particular position, it would be the council's, the council's representative, would we be able to have to consent on the hire and consent on any termination? I don't mean just be able to give input, but I mean, for this position, would we be able to have essentially a binding say along with the commissioners, who of course are over the department, in any hiring and firing?
Well, I, I guess we would need to talk to the commissioners about that. I don't know that it would be a problem. But I, I can't, I can't speak to that because we've never discussed that.
I just think that might be a way of, I mean, maybe, maybe others feel differently, but that might be a way of, like I said, splitting the difference and making sure that we, that our interests are protected, but yet still having the benefit of another county attorney who would report through the normal chain of command of the county attorneys.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm not clear exactly about the reporting because the attorney that's represented you for years has always reported directly to you. And we all have meetings to keep, keep the other attorneys informed about what's going on. So that's kind of, the, the way it's been structured is that each attorney that's assigned to a department or an office reports directly to those, those departments or offices, boards or commissions or whatever.
I'm just talking about hiring and firing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Margie, you had your, you have your hand up?
Yeah. I want, I want to remind the council that you do have a statutory authority to describe positions. So when you are describing the position for a county attorney, if you need to make changes to a job description to meet certain needs that you have, that's your statutory authority. And I would encourage you to work with Dave. He's got 36 years of experience. He knows how this works. I'll tell you that my impression of how the, the attorney position works for the county council goes back to 1995, when I was a law clerk. So I was a young law student, second year. Steve Galvin, Dave Schilling and Bill Steger were the full-time attorneys, three full-time attorneys. And that, all the attorneys represented all of the constituents and within Monroe County. And I saw that that system worked. Fast forward to 2002, I had been in private practice and I got the opportunity to fill in for Steve Galvin for a while when he was taking a vacation. And they were able to get a full-time position approved and I applied for it. And I remember during the interview process, Councilmember Hawk was part of that process and expressed interest in having a council attorney just for the council. And I said in the interview, if that's what you're looking for, I'm not your person because I like this structure. I think this structure works. I think it, it's the best structure for Monroe County Government. And, and over the years, I've never seen a true conflict of interest. I think there might have been one when I left county and went to the city. There might have been one true conflict of interest. But over the years, there really has not been true conflicts of interest between constituents within, in Monroe County. There have been plenty of disagreements, but no true legal conflicts of interest. And again, save one that I think happened when I went over to the city of Bloomington. Now, since I've been back and since I've been representing the county council, I will say that I think Dave's mention of the experiment of having a county council attorney separate from the rest of the legal department, I think we're experiencing some growing pains from having done that experiment. We're now back under having, you know, we had a separate attorney for the county council for many years from 2007 to 2015. The commissioners got used to having a legal department that just represented everybody but the county council. Since I've been back representing the county council, it's taken some effort to, to make everybody remember that that whole, that legal department represents everybody, including the county council. And I've been doing my level best to assert the statutory authority of the county council, not because I, I love you guys more, although I do love you guys, but it's because I respect the way the statutes are written. And you guys are a check on other powers within the county. And, and I think that having legal representation under a single umbrella is your surest way to make sure that your attorneys are communicating, that they are unbiased, that they are fair, that they are adhering to their legal and ethical duties under Rule 1.3 of the rules for attorneys, the ethical rules for attorneys. And believe me, we read that rule and we, we do our best to represent our organizational client. But I would encourage you to address your concerns through the job description, but to keep the position under the umbrella of the legal department. Because I do think that that serves Monroe County Government really well. And obviously I'm not going to be here as an employee. It's not going to be my thing to deal with, but I did want to give you my two cents on that. And, and I'm, you know, I'm going to miss being in Monroe County and, and, you know, and I'm going to miss working with all of you guys. But I would, I think things have been going well the last, you know, few years. I've been really grateful to be in the legal department and working with Dave and Jeff and Lee Baker. And I do think that that structure will serve everybody well. And if you do have concerns, I think your job description is the way, is the vehicle to address those. Thanks.
I would say one other, Margie, one other way to that would be to, if you have concerns or if you're having issues, let me know. And then we can try to address them before they become a problem.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree. And I don't know that, you know, if there have been issues in the last several years, you know, I, I don't know if those have been brought to Dave, but certainly I think if they would have been brought to Dave, we, we could deal with them. I'm not aware of them.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hawk?
Yes. I agree with a couple of things that's been said this evening in that I, I agree that this could be fixed with the job description. And who's in charge of this, this job descriptions? We are. And that job description could very well say that this, because when you read that job description, it doesn't say that this is primary to be, you know, the first focus is to be for the county council and however we want to word it. And that they would report to the county council. As far as, and I, I agree with Councilmember McKem, that there, if we made it so that the final decision would be up to the council and, and who it would be hired, who would be hired. And also that the county council would have the decision as to whether or not that, at, at any time that that position needed to be replaced. One of the things that I would like to see, and it has not happened, is that that county, the representative, the legal representative of the council, be very involved right now with what's going on at the state. I'm not saying they should be there in making comments, but be following along because that's what, what happens at the state and with the law, having to and with the law, having to do with what affects counties. And, and nobody seems to be, I mean, I watch it all the time, I, I know others are watching. But we need to have people keeping an eye on that. And I don't see that that's officially happening. So when people say we don't have enough work for a council attorney, I would certainly want to make sure that that was part of the job description. It's big. Is there any interest in working on getting a quick change run on that job description? So when somebody is hired, and I do think that that needs to happen fairly quickly, so they have the opportunity to work with Ms. Rice before Ms. Rice leaves. But, but to change that wording so that it says that this is the primary responsibility is to be the council attorney and report as well, not, not just to legal administrative person, but also to the council. To any interest in doing that, I think that fixes the whole thing.
I think it could, for, certainly. We've got a couple of other comments, and I, I do want, as, as, if you do have concerns about keeping the status quo and moving forward with hiring, then, you know, let, say so here. I, I, I'm interested in looking at the job description, but I think what we could do is proceed and also be looking at the tweaking of, of, of what this person's job description might say with respect to supervision or job, you know, hiring and firing kind of privileges.
And it wouldn't change a job classification, because we know when all the attorneys are going to be paid, the classification will be the same, it's just the responsibilities and duties will be.
Okay. Yeah. So, Counselor Deckard?
Thank you. I, I don't know that I'm, I'm going to speak to the, the general, what people want to see in this description, but I would like to make just the following comment. And, and this can be, should be interpreted as praise for the present occupant, Ms. Rice, in that her sense of local government law, in combination with state law and all options as it concerns what we do, is tremendous. And not only that, but the context and the historical knowledge about what goes into the things we do. And you know, particularly when I was a younger counselor, not that I've been here that long, but a younger counselor, you tend to be, at times, I tend, I tended to be a little bit more rash on things. And I can remember a couple of conversations where Margie Rice has given me that historical context on things which I appreciate, that helped us do things. And the end result of that, if you really look at it, is what we just did with all that whiz work, which we just talked about. I can remember being in very early PAC meetings, and very skeptical, to be honest with you, about our ability to do it and the need to do it, and how we would get there. And Margie Rice really beat that drum. Not to mention the criminal justice discussions that we, you know, initiated pre-pandemic. They've obviously had some delays throughout. What my point is, first of all, thank you, Margie. We don't always say thank you, Margie, when we should say thank you, Margie. I hope that's not the reason you're, you're going to those greener pastures. But the second thing is, the context and that drive for local government's role in law and the council's role, I think can get lost in that. I do, we have worked really hard to transition around here, and I want to make sure that whatever we can do to support transitioning new people in, so that that context gets overlaid with what, what, what our responsibilities are. You've heard me say a million times, it would be a travesty to lose the work that we have done in that whiz process. No law that's with Michelle, the auditor's office, but certainly Legals working with Ms. Rice. Tremendous, not to mention the relationship with whiz. So, anyway, that's a lot of meandering thoughts, but that context is important. If we don't understand our history, my gosh, we'll make the same mistake 55 times. What's more, when counties do it, they pay for it, and there's no free money for that. So, anyway, just some thoughts there.
Thank you. Counselor McKinn?
I was just going to say, on the, on the job description issue, I'm certainly willing to support reviewing and tweaking the job description, as long as that can kind of happen in parallel with, with recruiting and searching for employees. Because we know that that's, I mean, just these days, hiring takes a long time. And so as long as we can do those in parallel, I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you. Ms. Rice?
I just want to point out a couple of things. One, to Marty's comment, we do have a lobbyist hired for Monroe County that is working on legislative issues. Now, this short session, they've just sent out one legislative report. We'll make sure that we get that to you guys. But we do have Rick Cockrum, who's an experienced lobbyist, is working on legislative issues. I get that report, I send it on to the other attorneys that have been in contact, but we'll make sure to get that to the council to address those concerns. Do want to remind the council that you guys imposed a moratorium on amending job descriptions. So, let me just point that out, because I don't want you to say, hey, and that moratorium applies to everybody but us. If you want to do that, you can, but keep in mind that other people are going to be like, oh, that's interesting, that the council can do it. So what you might, just think about this. I don't want you to manufacture a problem that is not actually in existence right now. I don't know that you have a problem right now with the way that you're being represented or that your interests aren't being served. I can tell you that the legal department regularly talks about separation of power and what do statutes say, and how are we representing Monroe County, our clients, our client and our constituents. And I don't see that changing when I walk, when I leave, because I know that Dave Schilling is very aware of that. I learned it from Dave Schilling. So, I would say, maybe you go with the job description as it is now. You emphasize to Dave Schilling, we want to make sure we're, we're represented well. And then if you have a problem between now and the time you guys, you know, your moratorium ends, then make sure when that moratorium ends, you change your job description. But I would say, it's going to look odd to the rest of the world if you're changing your job description and you told everybody else they can't change theirs. I just don't think that seems real fair, and I, I want to point it out.
And this would be why we don't want you to leave us, because you point out things like this.
Yes.
Just saying. Counselor Hawke?
Yes, as a reminder, of course, I didn't support saying we're not going to change job descriptions, because we never know. We were tying our hands behind our back when we did that, which, so it wasn't a good choice. However, the part of that was so that we didn't have things going to whiz to change things around. All we have to do to change this is say that this person is going to be representing the county council primarily, and that would, we'd report it to the county council. That's no change to the classification. It won't go to whiz. It would be up to the three members of the PAC to put this change, do it quickly, in tandem with trying to make sure that we get the person on board and be done. I mean, and, and then that's fair to everybody. And certainly, I don't understand why the commissioners would care one little bit, not one whit, because it, it shouldn't change anything. If we're all going to be playing, you know, kumbaya, what difference does it make? And if we're not, then we're going to really need to have this representation. And by the way, we will not always have the wonderful Ms. Rice that will be helping us. We don't know who we're going to end up with. And so we've always done a pretty good job of making sure we have great attorneys, and I think that we will. But I see no reason why the PAC couldn't gather together very quickly and take suggestions from the rest of the council and put together truth or three sentence change, and we're fixed. That's what I suggest.
Are there any other comments or on this item or questions for Mr. Schilling, while we have him? Yeah, okay. I'm going to suggest that we move forward with hiring under the same structure that we have now, and look at what we want to do with the job description. And move, move toward, you know, determining whether or not we break our own rule, make an exception for ourselves, or or give it till the end of the year, which is, I think, when we had our moratorium listed this one year. So, but barring any screaming objections, I would, I would like to go ahead and, and at least allow them to post the position so that we don't delay in, in having legal representation. Yes, Ms. Hawke?
But certainly hope that you would agree that the PAC could come together and make those changes, not wait, but do it in tandem. Because if you say, let's wait, and, and we hire somebody, and their position as they're being hired by the commissioners, and doing what the job description says now, we, that person will already be on board. You can't very well change their job description after they've been hired and been here. So if we plan to ever have one that is actually going to represent the council, now is the time to do it, when we're in between staff. Oh, wow. Okay, thanks, bye. Just go home.
PAC can certainly discuss it, I think that makes sense. I think it's time for us to say thank you to Dave Schilling for being here, and thanks to everyone else for enduring a long meeting. And say that we are adjourned.
Thank you for your time and consideration, I appreciate it.
All right. Take care, everybody, bye-bye.